Good evening. Today is January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Chloe Castillo, Public Information Officer for the Palisades Incident. Today, we will have the Community Town Hall meeting virtually. There will be five speakers. The five speakers will discuss the operations briefing, the fire weather briefing, incident meteorology, and there will be closing comments from our incident command. First up to speak will be our operations chiefs.
Good evening. My name is Christian Litz with my partner, Landon Hack. We're the operations chief on the Palisades Fire. Just with a situational update as we're going through. So how we do everything prior to, as we move through this is always number one is life and with the structured defense mission to protect the homes as much as possible. We always plan to keep the smallest footprint, but we prepare for the big, and that's what we had a robust plan as we came into this wind event. Starting up in Division Alpha here in the Mandeville Canyon area, the fire has progressed. It is slowly backing down into the Sullivan Canyon area. We worked fixed wing with retardant all day today to hold that in place, to limit any fire progression as much as possible, and we're maintaining a presence in that Mandeville Canyon and Sullivan Canyon area, preparing for anything that might happen, and tactically patrolling all the residents in that area. Coming down in the Charlie Foxtrot Juliet and Mike and Papa, pretty much the same story, actively with resources out there, patrolling the area, mitigating any calls that come in. That could be smoke calls, that could be residents that need assistance, and they're keeping diligent in what they're doing and full effort to overhaul any structures and limit any kind of progression and using that structured defense tactics that we use every day in this job. Coming on the Division Tango side, which is the western edge of the fire, that fire, that edge has backed up or has progressed to the edge of the Franklin Fire that we had last month, so it's looking really good with the progression. You're gonna see that it holds there. Coming up in Division Uniform, that's another place that you saw activity up on that Payuma Ridge system above Montanito. We saw some of that heavier fuel in there burn off today. We did anticipate that, and we're trying to control that and as it comes down and looking for opportunities to put in some direct line in there to keep it to the smallest footprint. But again, like always, we're identifying secondary control lines to limit that fire progression, planning for the future. Coming on over to Division Victor, the action is over in the Fruenward area up at Topanga Canyon. We have a lot of resources in there, moving along the fire's edge, mopping up where we can, securing those edges, getting in there with those structures. Again, a priority that we have to try to limit the fire progression and any adverse fire effects to all the structures that we have in there. On the east side of Topanga Canyon, the fire is burning along the ridge system and backing down into a natural rock crop that they have there. We're keeping eyes on that. Again, utilizing aircraft in all these areas to limit that fire progression. And then coming around the northern, the top side of the Palisades, again, having that presence, getting around in the structures, mitigating any calls that they have in there, responding at a quick notice, always ready to respond, and keeping a robust use of resources in there to mitigate anything that we find.
All right. Good evening. So another thing that we do when we have these large fires like this is get outside of the initial fire area. So a lot of what you hear, have talked about is a fire activity, the firefight that's going on right on the fire's edge. In the situation we've got here, we're also putting in what's called contingency lines. So we've got line construction going out a fair distance all the way around this. It's not all complete, but it's being built. Malibu Creek Park has been cut out. It's got line around it, and it's been progressing over to the east, going along some of the road systems up here, a mile or so off of the line, going across the top, and it's going to get completed up here, up around where this X is, and then east of Sullivan Creek, Sullivan Canyon there. Probably within the next, I would say, forty-eight hours or so, all that line is gonna be buttoned up and be holding line that can be utilized in the event that something does come out of here on a significant wind or terrain runs.
Good evening. Rich Thompson. I'm the instant meteorologist for the Palisades Incident. The instant meteorologist is here onsite. I provide all the weather support that the team needs to help manage the fire. That includes forecasts, briefings like this, interviews, things like that. So I'm here to provide any and all weather support that the team needs. Now, weather-wise for this fire, when the fire broke out, the area was under extremely strong Santa Ana wind event and under extreme red flag conditions. And that red flag, those red flag conditions have persisted up to this point, and they're gonna continue through tonight and tomorrow morning. So we have red flag in effect for this area until six o'clock tomorrow evening. So you're gonna see tonight is kind of one last little uptick in those Santa Ana winds. You're gonna have some pretty gusty north-northeast winds later tonight and during the morning tomorrow, probably gusting about anywhere from thirty to forty-five miles per hour. But then fortunately, by tomorrow afternoon, those winds will start to diminish dramatically across the fire, and actually we'll start getting a more weak kind of onshore sea breeze sort of wind across the fire, which will help the efforts overall through the day tomorrow. Then going into the weekend, we still have going the rest of the day of Friday into Saturday, very quiet, very calm conditions, just typical winds, onshore sea breezes, things like that. But then unfortunately, beginning Sunday and continuing through most of next week, we have a return of the Santanas. Looks like an extended period of Santa Ana winds for next week. Generally, weak to moderate level, so probably some pretty gusty winds out there, but even a chance for some strong Santanas by the Tuesday of next week. So it's definitely something I'm watching on a daily basis here in the fire. But again, we're looking for a little respite on Friday and Saturday from the Santa Ana winds, but then they're gonna pick up again Sunday through most of next week.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Campbell. I'm one of the fire behavior analysts for the incident. So our fire has grown and spread over the last couple of days quite well, and that's mostly because we've had some really favorable conditions. We've had really favorable conditions for fire growth. The obvious one here is the really strong winds that we've had, the Santa Ana wind event has really driven it from the north to the south, as well as the really dry air that's associated with that. So the relative humidities have made the air really dry, and that's in addition to our fuels. Then the fuels are also very receptive to burning right now because, well, we just haven't had any rain here all fall and into the winter. But by this time of the year, we should have had considerably more rain, and that would have encouraged those, the vegetation to start growing new vegetation and make it a lot less receptive to burning. So all of those conditions have made a ripe environment for fire spread, and that's what we've seen in the last couple of days. So tomorrow, we will see again favorable conditions for fire growth and spread. It will continue to be windy and dry. The good news is, is that we will start to see a moderation of that fire growth and fire spread tomorrow. The extreme winds that we've seen will start to diminish, and we will start to see a change in the direction of those winds. So where we've seen from north to south, we're gonna start to see more now a south to north. So the direction where we expect to see fire growth tomorrow are in those areas of the fire and the terrain that will favor the up canyon from south to north. So up here in Sullivan Canyon and Rustic Canyon and Mandeville Canyon, these are all canyons that are in line with the winds, and so those will be the areas that the fire will really want to go, just like water would. Same thing for Topanga Canyon. And then over here in Montanito, it's possible that some of those winds could push up over the slope and really wanna drive that fire down in that direction. And that's what we should expect for fire behavior tomorrow.
And next up, we're going to switch over to law enforcement operations with the Los Angeles Police Department, Commander Emmerich.
Good afternoon. I'm Commander Steve Emmerich of the Los Angeles Police, I'm the Los Angeles Police Department's Incident Commander. So today, we have over a hundred fifty police officers deployed throughout the LA City area of operations on the Palisades Fire, and the missions that our officers are assigned to are to conduct traffic control, crime suppression, and on order if they are, if they need to execute a hasty evacuation mission. Although we have responded to many calls for service within our area of operation, we only have one verified burglary report so far within the city of LA limit for the Palisades Fire. Thus far, so far, we have made no arrests, and I can tell you that on behalf of Chief McDonald, we have taken the governor's offer and greatly appreciate his deployment of the California National Guard resources out here, and we are gonna deploy them along traffic control points, which will free up additional police officers to conduct other law enforcement missions such as leuser, crime suppression. We want to remind residents that this area covered in the evacuation order is still closed for all persons. The only time we are allowing people into the evacuation order area is to recover essential prescription medication. And to obtain that escort, to obtain entry, you need to meet at one of those traffic control areas, and they will be escorted in by officers, given appropriate amount of time, and escorted back outside of evacuation area. Thank you.
And next up, we'll have the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Carr from Malibu Lost Hills Station. As of right now, we have over a hundred deputies deployed into these fire areas in our jurisdiction. We are currently working right now with leuser suppression, traffic control, and assisting with evacuations. As of right now, we've had only one report of leuters arrested. Two people were arrested for looting earlier today. As we go forward, we will be continuing with the assistance of, again, traffic control, further evacuations if needed, and we will keep you informed. We just wanna let you know to stay informed with official channels regarding evacuations, and if you are ordered to evacuate, please do so. But we are gonna continue to partner with our other law enforcement personnel as well as our fire personnel to shepherd you through this crisis. Thank you.
And next up, we will have the Unified Palisade Incident Commanders.
Good evening. I'm Brian Martin. I'm the Deputy Unified IC for Los Angeles County Fire Department. As you can see, the size of the fire and the conditions that operations and meteorologists and the fire behavior analysts went over, this fire continues to be a very challenging and difficult situation for us to handle. We have a lot of resources locally and responding from all up and down the state and even out of state on the west coast to help us battle this fire. Some of the, some of the challenges that we face are the maintaining the evacuations of the areas. We'd like to thank you, the public, for evacuating early and often. Like when we told you to evacuate, it makes our job much more easy. Those of you that remain in the outer line areas of the warning areas, maintain your vigilance and be ready, set, and go when we tell you to go. We've had a couple of new fires in the region, and I would say that everyone has been vigilant and following those orders, and we just ask you to maintain that. Also, I'd like to thank our partners, our local law enforcement partners that were just up here, Los Angeles City Fire Department, and especially Cal Fire Incident Management Team for coming in to help us manage this incident. Everyone here has been great partners, and we look forward to continuing that communication out to the public. Thank you.
And next, we are going to read aloud some of the questions that we received. Pause. We are going to go ahead and have the Los Angeles Fire Department Incident Commander in Unified speak to the incident.
Good evening. Assistant Chief Joe Everett, Los Angeles City Fire Department. First, I'd like to give my heartfelt feelings towards the neighbors that we have in Los Angeles City for some of the devastating losses that have occurred, and also our neighbors in the Los Angeles, Malibu area. I want you to know that we're gonna be in this with you until the end. So the Los Angeles City Fire Department has been on scene, mostly in the confines of the city of Los Angeles, for going on well over forty-eight hours, and our people are out there working as hard as they can to try to mitigate what's been happening. We'll continue to be here throughout the, throughout this, this event. And I just wanted to reach out, thank law enforcement, and also I wanna echo, I wanna thank the public that did participate in the evacuations and helped us get up there and do the best we can for the incident. Thank you.
And next up, we're going to read aloud the comments that have been placed in the chat, and we will get a couple of them answered. Any questions that are asked after the fact, or the questions that are answered by our operations chiefs, we will put them in a fact sheet and have them shared tomorrow on the LAFD and the LASD Facebook page.
Good evening again. Christian Litz, Operations. I'll read a couple of questions and go through them. I'll read a couple of questions and go through them and then hand it off, and my partner, the other operations, Landon Hack, will answer some more questions. First question, what is a structure? What we consider a structure is anything that is a building, and so when you talk about structures, it could be a single-family dwelling, it could be a commercial building, it also could be an outhouse. So anything that is a building that we need to mitigate issues. So that's what a structure is. Why isn't preventative FOZ check a thing? So when you use retardant or FOZ check, there is a latency period. There's a period when it is moist, there is moisture in it that is most effective. Eventually, that FOZ check will dry out, and the fire will still be able to burn through that and get going. So there has to be a good combination. When you look at the FOZ check that's being put on the ground, we need to add the ground resources, have to go in and still cut away the fuel bed away from the burning fuel. So the FOZ check tells the fire activity lower down, allows and gives us time to get those resources in, but one cannot operate without the other. So we always have to get the people on the ground to make sure that we lock in that edge. How are they able to suppress the fire or control it without water? Very good question. So when you're talking about perimeter edges, there is tactics that we can utilize to do it without fire. However, the fire behavior does it. So if you look at any of our manuals, I'll just give you a little hint in the back door of firefighting, the only way that we can actually construct control line, which is using chainsaws, hand tools to cut the fuel away from the fire, we're only most effective when the flame lengths are about four feet tall. Because of the heat, because of the danger, it's unable to do it with the firefighters. So once these flames with the erratic wind and the wind damaging winds that we had, you're having flame lengths thirty, forty, fifty, or more higher. It's, we are unable to get in there without the water support. We did have water during this operation. We are limited. The fact is, is when we fight a normal structure fire, we flow about a thousand gallons a minute fighting that normal structure fire, and that's a single structure fire with the multiple hand lines and maybe heavy streams that we use that flow more water. If you can imagine how many structures were burning plus perimeter, we just outpaced the amount of water that any major water source can supply. So we had to use alternate tactics, bringing water tenders that we ordered a whole bunch. DWT, DWP did a great job bringing extra, so we're basically mobile hydrants to be able to fight the fire. This question is, what are the biggest challenges that remain? To be honest, the biggest challenge that remains is when you have a fire of this size, it's always resource management. We are always limited on resources. We never, you never have enough resources with one fire. Now, if you talk about the Eaton Fire went off, which is another damaging fire about, that has grown in the time, then the Hearst Fire, and then the Lydia Fire in Acton came off, and then today with the new fire, the Kenneth Fire. So we're constantly competing with resources availability, constantly competing with the weather conditions that we've been having. Also, if you look at aircraft, which is a prime real estate, one thing that we do to help to manage those challenges is we are constantly talking with the other resources. We talk to Air Attack, which is a fixed wing running our sky, air resources, and we are constantly shifting resources of other fires to help mitigate, try to keep fires as small as possible, and then bring them back here again to our priority areas within this fire. This question is, how concerning is the fire so close to Mulholland? So being a firefighter for over twenty years, it is always concerning when we have fires next to structures. Everybody in this room is very concerned with any kind of life in structures because that is our priority number one, so I'll never downplay anything like that. We are doing hard work to contain, to keep the smallest footprint as possible. Full suppression fire, we like to say that, and then lock it, remember, we plan to keep it small. We plan to keep it away from the structures. We put as much resources as we can in there, but we always prepare for events to change and for us to have to change directions. So we're very diligent on that. And I'll hand it over to my partner, Landon.
Good evening, Landon Hack, Operations Section Chief. First question is, will volunteers be taken from fire departments around the US? Resources are being ordered, requested from out of state. It would just kinda depend on the organizations within that state and how they staff that equipment and move them out of state. So there probably could be some volunteers in with that, but not, you know, we can't say for sure how they're staffing that. So potentially, yes, some volunteers could be coming from other fire departments in the US. The next question is, why have the National Guard aviation have not, let me start that over. Why have the National Guard aviation units not been activated out of Point Magoo? So the state and Cal Fire are currently in the process of activating the National Guards units. I don't know specifically about that location, but that's all. units. I don't know specifically about that location, but that's all part of the activation plan and proximity and stuff like that, where they come from. And this one is, when will the strategic break line be finished, the line outside the fire? So I spoke a little bit to that. We call it contingency line, line that's set back off of the actual fire's edge, in the event that the fire crosses our lines on the edge. So that, that line is usually pretty laser, labor-intensive and wide. We do a lot of brushing on it. We do some mastication, if that's applicable for the fuel model in there. So, and there's miles of it that need to go in. We've gotten some miles done, but we're hoping that within the next forty-eight hours, give or take, that it will be completed enough to be able to hold, hold fire. When we do put that line in, we do, is the map still up? When we put that line in, we do prioritize and try and start in areas that we think are gonna be impacted first, if we were to have the fire come across the direct control lines. So that's why up above Sullivan Canyon here, that ridge line is essentially done. There's some areas up above Silver Park in there that are done, and it's, it's kind of gets dotted together eventually. So the resources kind of leapfrog ahead of each other, and the dozers, it makes the bulldozers that are doing the bulk of that work be able to get it done quicker.
That concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.